...meeting back to order at 12:39. And first up, we have public participation. But where did I lose Marilyn?
Do we have to...
She's rounding up Kathy. She's doing her Becky. Part of that looks...
Does anybody know how to start the mic? So we have Mike. Oh, here she comes. All right. I started to, but you're here, so.
Okay. I don't know. Did you tell them five minutes?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. So we're going to go into public participation. Each person is given five minutes of time to address the board on whatever subject they so desire. The board does not engage in a back and forth conversation at this time. They may choose to contact you later. I will tell you who is the first person up and who's on deck, even though baseball season is over. Mike Libby is first, and he will be followed by Rebecca Bush. So if you come to the end of the table, we will be ready whenever you are.
Playoffs is still going on.
Yeah, my baseball season's over as far as it's worth it.
You see that one meme or whatever Simba says to the Lion King? Yeah, what are the playoffs? And he says, "You don't need to know, you're just a Cub."
Nice introduction Dr. Libby got there.
All right, please.
Not a Cubs fan, pretty much not a fan of anything. My name is Mike Libby. I'm a professor of geography at Central Michigan University and co-coordinator of the Michigan Geographic Alliance. I am here today to talk about the process of revising social studies standards. This is counting the national standards process, my fourth effort through this. After the last one, I swore I was going to retire before the next one. But I have participated in this. This has been by far the most collegial and inclusive of all of the projects I've participated in. We have had a variety of people involved. We had content area committees looking at the standards. Our charge was fewer, clearer, and higher. And to look at the standards through the lens of C-3, not adopted. But that was a good decision. We have done that. It went through a whole series of things. Carol Egbo was deeply involved in coordinating the standards. Amy Bloom unfortunately dropped off the leadership committee early, but she has continued to make very constructive comments to us through the process. We have gone out for public testimony. And it has been collegial and positive. And people from all sides of the political spectrum have commented with what I perceive to be a substantial degree of collegiality and professionalism. Virtually everyone who's commented has had a reasonable point to make, which we have tried to respond to. There are some people who said we were inconsistent in our use of the terms democracy and constitutional republic. I think we're going to be able to clarify that. They're both appropriated in some different areas. There were some people who were very interested in more on genocide. We've had it in a couple places. We had some people who are more interested in civil rights material. We've also had people who were not in favor of either of those. So it's been a very positive process. Specifically, I want to talk about the handout I have just given you because it demonstrates what we have done in terms of specifically taking a look at the process skills that are to cut across the content standards. And I want to do this because one of the concerns has been C-3. How much we're using from C-3, how much a national organization is influencing our process. And I can show you where that influence has been. The first page is what is in our existing standards. It was included only once, only per secondary. And as you read through this, a lot of the general knowledge stuff is already included in our standards. The disciplinary knowledge stuff is pretty much included in our standards and seem to be repetitive. The middle three are really where the core of social studies processes are. So we looked at those with the intent of making them fewer, clearer, higher. In the C-3 document, they focused particularly on the idea of developing compelling questions and supporting questions. A compelling question leads to an argument or an issue or a persuasive essay. A supporting question leads to evidence or support. We thought it was a good idea to be more specific about including those terms. So what you have on the second three pages is our Michigan process standards, which we thought from the C-3, and which was strongly advocated for by Amy Bloom, by the way, that we needed a process, we needed to have them not just in secondary, but also in elementary and middle school, made more great appropriate. If you'll look under inquiry, research, and analysis in P-21 and P-22, you will see the terms compelling and supporting questions. We thought that was a positive addition we could get from C-3. That is the extent of the contribution C-3 made to these process standards. And I hope when you get concerns about that, you'll be able to refer to this as how we've used Michigan standards and modified them in an appropriate way. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Bush, and she will be followed by John Bracy.
Good afternoon. My name is Rebecca Bush. I'm here today on behalf of the Michigan Social Studies Supervisors Association. I am currently the chair, entering my third year as the chair of that organization. And I cannot underscore enough Dr. Libby's comments about how collegial the entire content expectation updating process was, continues to be. We have several colleges and university folks that are represented. We have a huge number of teachers that are representative of this work that was put forward. We have consultants from around the state that have worked on it. We have had several members of all of our social studies organizations, Michigan Council for Social Studies, as well as some of the other content organizations. And as an ISD, social studies consultant, I have to tell you that so far, our comments that we have received throughout our county and some of our neighboring counties have been nothing but positive. When teachers look at those content expectation updates, they are extremely positive and optimistic and hopeful as far as really helping to make the shift that is so necessary right now for our students in social studies to, instead of memorizing content and memorizing factual information, to be able to take it to a more rigorous step. And that's what the work has done. It's an extremely important and impactful set of content expectations that was done with a lot of collaboration, K-12, and continues to be. So on behalf of the social studies supervisors, who have been at every step along the way in the process, we would also really like to thank the folks at MDE for the process that we followed, for the process that has ensued with receiving public feedback from around the state, from the multiple opportunities that our teachers have had to take a look at those draft documents and to make some very pointed and important comments that elicit some very positive feedback. Thank you.
Thank you for being here and sharing.
Our next speaker is John Bracy, and he will be followed by Hattie McGuire.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Pleasure to be here again. And first, I want to say, I'm John Bracy. I'm the executive director for the State of Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs. This is Chad Badgerow, our education programs manager. And again, I like to come every year and sort of update you on what our impact and our efforts have been in the realm of arts education. And first, quickly, apologies to Eileen because last year she suggested that we do a larger project, a larger presentation to you, and we haven't been able to get on that agenda. So I am trying, but I don't want to go, you know, more than a year without telling you what our efforts have actually been. So sort of sharing. And I will say, even though our partnership with the Department of Education isn't what it was save, you know, a dozen years or so ago, we do do some work. There's a program, for example, that we're partnering with you and the Americans for the Arts called SP3, which is State Pilot Policy Program. A couple of Mary Head and Megan...
Schrauben.
Schrauben. And I think Board Member Austin also serve on that panel with Americans for the Arts, which is really, really pretty interesting. So we have several programs that are geared specifically toward arts education across the state, working primarily with arts organizations, but also some with schools. I'll tell you right now, the two programs that you may be most interested in, our Bus Trek Grant Program and our Arts Equipment and Supplies Program. That's new this year, or was new in fiscal '15. Those programs we have yet to accept applications for, for fiscal 2016. So, but the '15 numbers were really telling. We were able to take out of our budget, which, again, isn't what it used to be, of course. But we awarded $60,000 in field trip grants. These are grants that are up to $500 for teachers or schools to take a field trip to an arts and cultural organization. Everything from the Shipwreck Museum at Whitefish Point to Michigan Opera Theater. It really just sort of covers, helps cover transportation costs. With the Bus Trek Grants, this past year, we impacted, over 15,000 students were able to take a field trip with those grants. They represented 43 counties, even though the request level is probably double what we could actually afford to supply in terms of grants. The Arts Equipment Grants, we discovered that in some of our research that very often arts instructors were some of the first teachers reaching into their pocket to buy those supplies or to try to get some equipment. Or in one school's case, to fix some equipment that they've never been able to budget for to repair, which were French horns that they couldn't repair the pads on. They didn't have the budget. So we created this program where a school or teacher can apply for up to $2,500 to purchase art supplies or equipment or to repair equipment within their school. Again, this is a reimbursement type of program, so we weren't really sure how that was going to work in this pilot year. But we awarded $40,000, even though we had nearly $130,000 in requests. Forty-three schools in 23 counties were able to either purchase supplies or equipment. So we're really excited about that program as well. Our primary program in arts education is our residency program. This past year, or this current year for fiscal '16, the council just awarded 25 artists and residencies to schools. Those schools are going to receive up to 30 contact hours from a professional artist, totaling awards of $285,000 and some change. This is a growing program. We had just over $700,000 in requests for this program. It's becoming more popular all the time. It's increasing. It's up again 27% this year from the past year. And that growth line has been solid, solid that way. The other program that we have that focuses on education is a projects program that's education-based, and that's for schools or perhaps municipalities or some other organization that does an arts education project. And we made nearly $200,000 in those type of grants, reaching kids and learners of all ages. So I just want you to know that you do have a potential partner in the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs. And even though I have yet to meet the new superintendent, I know you know how to get old to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hattie McGuire, and she will be followed by Linda Malaran. We're ready whenever you are.
Thanks for giving me some time to talk to you. I'm Hattie McGuire. I'm a National Board Certified English teacher at Novi High School, and I'm here as a member of the Network of Michigan Educators to talk about a success story we've had at Novi High School. When I thought about what I wanted to talk about today, I was a little nervous because I was worried it would sound too small and it wasn't exciting enough. But that's why I want to talk about it. It's a very small thing we've done at Novi High School that's had a big impact on our students. What I want to talk about is independent reading. In 2012, I read the book Read Aside by Kelly Gallagher. And in it, he contends that in our rush to raise student achievement scores and to close achievement gaps, in our rush to get kids' career and college ready, we're forgetting to help them prepare to be independent lifelong readers. When we pick a text apart in class or we give them only teacher-centered texts, we are killing their love for reading. And the big problem with that is that they never become real lifelong readers. If you look at that little handout I gave you, on the right-hand side, there's some really shocking little graph there. A kid that reads 13 minutes a day ends up seeing about 600,000 words over the course of a year. A kid that reads 90 minutes a day sees almost 5 million words. That's a huge gap. And we end up with kids that have this huge amount of word poverty. And those are the kids that are struggling to make the big growth that we need them to make. So one of the biggest things we need to do is find a way to make them want to read. You can't get to that 90 minutes a day if you don't want to do it. So our English department did a book study of Read Aside, and we decided we needed to change the culture of reading at our school. And the way we decided to do it was very small, 10 minutes a day, nothing more than 10 minutes. I gave you kind of a timeline of what we did over the past four years on that handout, but I'm going to skip ahead and tell you what we did today, where we're at today in Novi. Today, if you go into Novi High School, every student in the whole building has his or her own independent novel that they've chosen. You see kids reading in lots of different places, not all of them. We're not quite there at 100% yet. But you see kids reading in other classes. Our library is a checkout central, according to our librarian. In class, every, English class every day, no exceptions, kids get 10 minutes at least to read. And the teachers read, too. We think that's a huge part of the success of this, is our students see us as reader. We don't take attendance during that time. We're not grading papers. We're showing them that we value that reading time, too. And the kids are reading a lot. Last year, one of our English teachers in the freshman class took, she took a tally of how many books her kids read. By the end of the year, they'd read 522 novels. It's about five books on average per kid, in addition to the texts that they already were reading in class. And so on those texts in class, we haven't completely abandoned class texts. You still need those, too. But we're working really hard to make those more student-interest-driven and diverse texts. Our 11th grade teachers wrote a grant and got some additional texts for their class that would be higher student-interest texts. And then we've moved it beyond just the English department. Our entire building has now embraced this idea that literacy is key to moving that needle up for kids. And so our whole building is committed the past two years to concentrated work in every department on literacy instruction and opportunities, regardless of what core content area it is in there. So our next step is to look at figured data. We've got tons and tons of anecdotal evidence. We have all kinds of kids that will say, "Oh, I never used to read before, and I read four books this year." That's great, but we want to see if it's showing in our test scores, too. So we have in-house common assessments at Novi. We've started to look at those numbers and see if we're having an impact there. The English 10 classes, they're the ones that have been doing this the longest. We looked at our scores on our final exam last year and realized it might not be challenging enough anymore, which was super exciting, especially in the area of vocabulary decoding for new words. So kids are better able at the end of the class now than they were three years ago to decode words that they've never seen before. We think that's a direct correlation between how much more they're reading. So it's really exciting, and we're hoping to see more of that in the years to come as we continue looking at the data. So I hope our 10-minute little look at Novi is something that was interesting to you and your peek into our writing world has been informative. We'd love to have you come read with us anytime. Just bring a book, or we'll help you find one.
Very good. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Malarani, and please correct me on the pronunciation of your name. And she will be followed by Mike Shibler.
You got it right the second time.
Malarani?
Yes.
Good.
I am here today on behalf of the Michigan Coalition to prevent gun violence. As some, if not all, of you are aware, the Senate Judiciary Committee is taking testimony this afternoon on Senate Bill 442. This bill would make it legal to carry a concealed weapon in schools, daycare centers, bars, stadiums, entertainment venues seating more than 2,500, places of worship, hospitals, dorms, and classrooms at universities and community colleges. We strongly oppose this bill and will be providing testimony to the committee this afternoon. Experience in other states has shown that when gun laws are weakened, there are more gun deaths. When gun laws are strengthened, gun deaths are not eliminated, but they are reduced. We believe the proliferation of guns in daily life increases citizens' risk of death and injury. We believe it is the function of security in school buildings and the police for the population in general, not individual citizens, to safeguard the general public and the students in our state schools and universities. We hope you can support the opposition to Senate Bill 442. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
And I believe our last speaker is Mike Shibler, unless someone else has a form.
What's coming up?
Thank you.
Nope, just one, two piles.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Shibler. I'm superintendent of schools of the Rockford Public Schools in Kent County. Just to give you a background, I've been an educator in the state of Michigan over 47 years. I started teaching in 1968 over in Warren Consolidated Schools. I've been a superintendent of Rockford, it's my second superintendency, for 27 years. And so I've been here for a while. I kind of get what's going on, I think. I could tell you this, and I'm going to speak on Senate Bill 442. Obviously, we're adamantly against this bill. I want to make it really clear that guns have no purpose in schools, no purpose really in public arenas of any kind. I also want to make it clear that I am not against people having guns for sport, protection, for hunting. I'm certainly not against people having CPLs, concealed pistol, opportunities to carry, if in fact they're using it for the appropriate reasons. But I am absolutely against the possession of guns in schools, daycare centers, stadiums, entertainment venues, places of worship, hospitals, dorms, and colleges, universities, and so forth. The Rockford Public Schools has made it clear that all of our elementary schools, which are eight of them, our two middle schools, our freshman center, and our high school are weapon-free zones. And I have red signs with white lettering posted on the side of every building saying, "Weapon-free zone." As superintendent of schools in Rockford, I am responsible for the safety of 8,000 kids, 1,000 employees, parents, and the community. And I take that job very seriously, and I would imagine every superintendent in the state does that as well. But I cannot expect an employee of our buildings, for example, secretary, to be able to identify and accurately assess a person coming into our building as to their mental or emotional state of mind. Senate Bill 442 would allow anyone with a licensed concealed weapon permit to keep that weapon concealed into all those venues I just mentioned. That's just inappropriate. Advocates for concealed weapons in public places state that, well, if they have a gun, they would be able to prevent other tragedies that have occurred in the past. Well, I've talked to everybody from Secret Service, FBI, state police, county, and local, and every one of the professional experts that I talked to have clearly said to me they do not want some type of a position, our experience that we're describing under 442, Senate Bill 442, to happen. In fact, they tell me if they come into a building where there's a shooter, they're not going to have the time to ask, "Are you a concealed weapon permit holder? Are you the bad guy?" In fact, they'll just start shooting. And this is coming from people who are, in fact, experts in the field. In Rockford, we have done the following, many things to protect our students. In 1998, I established a security department for Rockford. Now, this is a suburban school district, right outside of Grand Rapids. And I hired 12 people, former law enforcement professionals, to protect our buildings. With budget cuts in 2008, we went down to eight of those people. But they're still in place, and they're still working. We have, we are constantly training our staff and to deal with emergency situations and how to react to those situations. As recently as last summer, we trained all of our staff, again, in emergency protocol. In 2014, we passed a $76 million bond issue. Of that $76 million, 11 million is going to security. And for the last seven months, we constructed security vestibules in every one of our buildings. Shatterproof glass. You walk in there, you don't go any further than until you're allowed to go further into the building. And so you can see something like that is going to protect as best we can, and it's never 100% foolproof, to protect our kids and our staff. I will be speaking today at this hearing at 3 o'clock, and I'll be urging the Senate Judiciary Committee to vote this down without it going to the Senate. But if it goes to the Senate, and if it goes to the House, I can assure you that educators throughout the state will be working hard to defeat any type of a bill that would provide concealed weapons carry in all these locations. Thank you.
Our final speaker of the day is Kate White.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you so much for having me. My name is Kate White, and I'm with Michigan Community Action. And I'm here today partly because of Pamela Pugh requesting me to come and tell you a little bit about our efforts to try to reduce poverty in Michigan and to offer our services of our network to help you in your interest in fighting poverty in the communities of Michigan. Community Action are designated geographic zones around the state where we have nonprofits and county-based organizations that are fighting poverty. And we know that your work is dedicated to educating children and adults. But we also know that one of the challenges is we hope that education will solve poverty. Sometimes when people are so poor and they enter a classroom, they don't have the tools they need, and they're not ready to learn. So we would like, as Community Action Network, to be a partner and a resource to the Board of Education and the whole educational system to help prevent poverty amongst families. I want to thank you for your work today. I know that it's hard to see poverty in the midst of all of the other objectives that you're trying to achieve while you're trying to educate families. Community action agencies around our state are doing innovative programs to solve hunger, to solve homelessness, to provide emergency housing, to provide transportation, to provide job training, to provide skills and supports for adult learners, trying to help people get back into the workforce. And of course, they're integral in providing Head Start, early Head Start, and early-on services in our communities. One of the wonderful things about Community Action that's similar to the Board of Education is that we are very locally driven. And all of our Community Action boards are created of 1/3 of actual citizens in the community that would benefit from our programs and services, 1/3 are our elected officials, and 1/3 are other community leaders. All of our work is driven by community needs assessments and all of our work is measured in terms of outcomes, trying to alleviate poverty. So I brought some resources for you today and I also brought you lists of the Community Action agencies in your communities. I hope that you'll consider Community Action as you try to make a difference in your community and look at it not just as the very local resources for your schools and school districts, but when you're thinking about policy changes and if you need feedback on how that would impact the poor or ways that we can take the resources that we have, which we all know are scarce and are in demand, to try to partner those resources with the human service resources that we receive in our state to try to help families piece together all of the supports they need to be able to be successful in education as well as in life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you want to just leave that there, we'll get it and pass it out to everybody.
I'm going to set it in two stacks so it doesn't slide all around.
Can we just mention real quick for those who came to talk about Senate Bill 442, which is the concealed weapons? We will be talking about that very shortly, so you might want to stick around for a little bit.
All right. That concludes public comment. So next, we're going to introduce some new departmental employees very quickly. We'd like to introduce the new employees who have joined us, and Kyle, I think you're going first.
Yes, thanks, Marty. I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce Mary Ann Smith with the Library of Michigan. Could you stand up and just tell a little about yourself and your role at the library?
I'm Mary Ann Smith. I am working in the State White Library System on the fifth floor of the library, the State Library. And I'm working on conferences and also traveling weekends. It's been very interesting and learning a lot.
Welcome. Norma Jean?
And I'd like to welcome and introduce Andrea Nessel in the Office of Field Services. Andrea?
Hi, Andrea Nessel, Office of Field Services. I'm a consultant with Legion Two and my teammates and I serve districts on the west side of the state and we work with them with technical assistance and support as they complete their consolidated applications for their grant money and work with them on programming and making sure they're following federal regulations for their grant money. And prior to that, I've been in the public school district for 20 years as a principal and assistant principal at elementary, middle, and high school.
Nessel?
I'd like to introduce Tamara Smolik from our Office of Standards and Assessment.
Hi, this is Tamara Smolik. I hail from Michigan State most recently. I'm a PhD in scientific education. I am now in the Office of Assessment, Community Science, and Research Consultant, so I'm responsible for the research and management of the community.
Welcome. Susan?
Good afternoon. I'd like to introduce Bethany Kramer, who just started with us in the Child and Development Care and probably has one of the toughest jobs in the department. Do you want to tell them what you do?
Still learning. My name is Bethany Kramer. I am in the Office of Great Start as the financial analyst for the Child Development Care. Really still learning it all as I came as a grant accountant from community health and so just trying to get...
Welcome to the department.
Welcome.
The last item on the community hall agenda is the presentation of Michigan winners of the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. The Presidential Awards for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching are the nation's highest honors for teachers of math and science. These teachers will spend the next year serving as models for their colleagues, inspiration to their communities, and leaders in the improvement of mathematic and science education. We've had the privilege of meeting Luke Wilcox before, back in June when he was a finalist for the Michigan Teacher of the Year, and we're all happy to welcome him back today. Linda?
Thank you. Some of you may be looking at the title on this and saying 2013. Really? Are you serious? It appears that the process at the national level is a bit out of sync right now and so Luke is indeed the 2013 winner, but that was just announced recently. So it's, we're not out of sync as far as the paperwork is concerned. So one of the great pleasures of my job is that we get to celebrate teachers and the fine things that they do, and every June I get to come to you with one of those celebrations. But it's just great fun today to be able to introduce you to, again, Luke Wilcox, who has become the Presidential Award winner in math, and he has a few things he'd like to share with you.
Sure. Thank you guys for having me. It's wonderful to be back here, you know, just a couple of months later and to see some familiar faces and also to see some new faces here, which is wonderful. And as I reflect on that whole Michigan Teacher of the Year process, I realize that none of that would have happened at all without this Presidential Award. And so I'd like to just share a few of my experiences dealing with the Presidential Award and also to tell you a little bit about my trip to Washington DC this past summer. So I'll take you back to the beginning where I was first nominated for the Presidential Award. And, you know, at first I had no idea what it was all about and I started to look into it. It looks kind of neat, but there's this lengthy application process that honestly was kind of intimidating to me. And so I spoke to some of my colleagues and some of my colleagues kind of urged me and pushed me to go through with it. And what I found was that I had to do a lot more writing than I'm used to doing as a math teacher. And in that writing, I really got an opportunity to reflect on my teaching and reflect on my career. And this is just one of those things that as teachers we often don't have time to do because we're so stuck in the day-to-day of getting lessons ready and grading quizzes and tests. And so for me to actually take the opportunity to do some reflecting about my instruction was just incredible for me and my career. And so I wrote my essays, I worked with my English teachers to rewrite my essays and rewrite my essays and rewrite my essays. And then another component is to videotape a lesson that you teach. And so I did a cross-curricular lesson where I took my AP Statistics students into the AP Biology classroom and my students actually worked with the Biology students to analyze some data that they had collected from an experiment. They were growing some plants and so we videotaped that lesson. I got an opportunity to reflect on that lesson and do some writing on that lesson. And one real big, I guess, bonus or help for me was that in the application process, the state of Michigan now has mentors that help Presidential Award applicants through the application process. So I said, "Yes, please, I would love to have a mentor." And so I got an email back very shortly thereafter from a guy named Dwight Seagreen, who happens to be a 1992 Presidential Award winner. And the crazy thing is that Dwight Seagreen, or maybe I should say Mr. Seagreen, was my 7th grade science teacher.
Oh.
And somebody who I really looked up to, was a, I mean, is a phenomenal educator. And so I got the opportunity to work with somebody who I really looked up to when I was young. And so I listened to everything he had to say. And he opened my eyes up to this world of education, which I didn't even know existed because I'd been so focused on my classroom for 10 years and didn't realize there was all this other cool stuff happening in education outside of my view. And he has done some incredible things. He's been to South America to just study frogs and he's in California doing a conference and he's in Texas and he's going to all these different places. And I was just inspired. Like, I want to do all of that stuff. And so everything he told me to do, I did it. You know, he said, "Join the National Council for Teachers of Mathematics. Go to conferences. Speak at conferences. Do professional development with your staff." And so I've spent the last three years really pursuing a lot of those things that he inspired me to do. And so when I found out that I won the award, after a phone call to my wife first, he was the first one that I called. And he was just thrilled and I was thrilled that I could say that I had won it. And so as part of the recognition process, you go to Washington DC for four days. And so my wife and I spent four days there this past summer. And in those four days, I got an opportunity to meet with Senator Debbie Stabenow and actually talk some education policy. I got to visit the Capitol. And then, of course, the highlight of the whole trip was the visit to the White House, where we spent the full day in the White House and I shook hands with the President of the United States. And I'll tell you, I never thought as a public school math teacher that I would ever have the opportunity, let alone to be in the White House, to be able to shake hands with the President of the United States. And I know that that's something that I'll carry with me for the rest of my life as just a highlight of my career. And so I also got the opportunity to meet all the other Presidential Award winners throughout the country. And so we're talking the best math and science teachers in the country. And now I have access to all of those people. And we have a community and we have a Facebook group and I have access to all of these people. And the other opportunities that I've been afforded just through the inspiration of Dwight Seagreen, such as the Michigan Teacher of the Year program, I've met some wonderful educators like the one sitting at the table here, who I now have as part of my network. And so in my reflection on like the whole process, the two things that I think I valued the most about it, number one, was that I got an opportunity to be reflective about my practice as a teacher. But number two, the network that has been opened up to me and some of the opportunities through those networks is just incredible. And so I hope to, in the future, continue to grow my leadership, my teacher leadership skills, and I hope to be involved as part of the conversation when educational decisions are being made. And I hope that I can bring to the table the perspective of the teacher who's in the classroom every day, who's working with the students and working with a variety of different students. I'm from Kentwood Public Schools and if you know anything about Kentwood, we have a very, very diverse student body there. And so I hope to continue to grow my teacher leadership and provide the teacher voice into the conversation. Thanks.
Thank you, students. I'm very lucky to have you. Certainly, congratulations to you and thank you for what you do and the difference you make each day in the lives of students.
Should I ask a question?
Sure.
There was an interesting op-ed piece in the New York Times yesterday about recreational math and the importance of teaching, using recreational math to entice children to be interested in math. Are you familiar with that?
Yeah, so while my experience in that is with my two young children that I have, who are seven and four. And of course, being a math teacher, I'm the one that is the first one to see something mathematical in what we do. And so for me as a parent, that's something that I try and interject into, you know, family dinners, walks out at the park, you know, rides on the bike and that sort of thing. But I mean, that's always about, you know, what do students think about math? And generally, when you ask students what they think about math, it's not good. They're afraid of math. They don't like it. And so I think that we have a lot of, we have a lot of growth to make in that respect. And to me, it's about making it contextual. Like, there's a story to it. So it's not just Xs and Ys and what you guys remember from algebra class that you hated, that there's a story to be told with it. And so, I mean, maybe that fits in with the idea of the recreational math, is that we need to make sure that the math that we're teaching is involved in some sort of context, that there is a story to go along with it.
Thank you.
I love math, by the way.
Yes. Hey, I like this new superintendent.
All right. Thank you very much and keep up the great work.
Congratulations.
So next, I've been asked to move up the state and federal legislative update and so we'll have Marty come up and then certainly Cassandra has some things as well. Positively, I mean.
At least she didn't say I have issues this time.
I'm sure she forgot about that.
I guess not. Thank you, Cassandra.
There's the whole maize and blue issue we have to...
Go blue.
Go blue.
Wait, did you change?
I did not. No.
I didn't notice this before.
Yes, it's been blue all day.
It's maize and blue?
Not maize.
Oh. I wore this because I was sure you were going to go green and white on me today.
I believe green, but not, yeah.
Okay.
So anyway, the Legislative Committee met on October 5th, discussed several pieces of legislation that are actually moving. There's a House Bill 4822, which is the 3rd grade literacy bill that's on the floor of the House. Senate Bill 103, the Educator Evaluation Bill, that's on the floor of the House. And then there's another piece of legislation with the House Bill 4261 that was discussed at length. And we have created, not we, the committee has created some statements to discuss and I believe Mertz has copies of, there's copies of those statements behind you.
Can you start with the concealed weapons?
Yep, we can start with concealed weapons.
Actually, it's a whole package, so you'll have them all.
All three are connected together, stapled together.
When you want to talk about them, they'll be right in front of you.
So it's the third page there that you want to start with?
Yes. Yeah.
I have one extra.
Could you just do it?
Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No. I defer to you.
So there are, like Marty said, there's three items that the Legislative Committee wanted to bring forth to the full committee, or to the full board today. And we're going to start with the third one since we've had some public participation regarding this already this afternoon. This, just in way of introduction, this is something that's kind of near and dear to my heart because I've spent the last 15 years working on colleges and university campuses and I am now at a community college, responsible for things like the Crisis Communication Plan. And this is something, unfortunately, I have to spend way too much time thinking about what happens when someone comes on campus with a weapon, whether the intent is good or bad. There's a reaction that happens as a result of that. And so I have requested that we come up with a statement, doing two things really. One, supporting a piece of legislation that would actually end the loophole for open carry on weapon-free zones, essentially. And the second is opposing the piece of legislation that's being discussed today, which would allow concealed carry in those weapon-free zones. So the draft statement that you have before you reads that the State Board of Education is committed to the safety of all Michigan schoolchildren. With the exception of law enforcement and school security personnel trained in the use of weapons to protect public safety, it is our firm belief that dangerous weapons, such as handguns and assault rifles, have no place in schools. Allowing weapons on school grounds only increases fear on the part of students and staff and increases the chances of a catastrophic incident. As such, the State Board of Education supports the passage of House Bill 4261, a bill to eliminate the open carry loophole that currently exists in law. Furthermore, the State Board of Education opposes Senate Bill 442, which will allow concealed firearms to be carried on school grounds by anyone with a license to carry a concealed weapon. And with that, I would ask for a motion to...
So moved.
Yes.
Second.
It's been moved and supported discussion. John?
Yeah, I very much support this. As you know, we've been following this discussion for a while. We thought, I hope this was not a serious effort to allow guns in schools, but clearly it is. And I think most gun owners, most gun carriers, most Second Amendment advocates believe there are certain places where there shouldn't be guns. There's no place for guns in schools. I think most would agree around schoolchildren. And I totally agree with Cassandra. If guns are around, it's more likely that a gun is going to be used, even by accident, and somebody's going to get hurt. And this argument that we're seeing being made that somehow if there are more people with guns, they would protect our kids from attack, I mean, is this the OK Corral and are we relying on vigilantes to protect our schoolchildren? Vigilantes make mistakes. You know, you saw the discussion about some self-appointed vigilante shooting at shoplifters coming out of Home Depot. I mean, this just will not work. And we heard the eloquent testimony from Mike Schibler and others about law enforcement officials viewing more guns in the hands of folks protecting from other guns as a recipe for disaster. So I would strongly urge that we approve the motion and I very much appreciate Cassandra and others' development of it.
Any other? Kathleen and then Richard?
I strongly support the statement. It's absolutely essential, I think, that we take a position in opposing any weapons in schools. To me, it's absolutely beyond belief that people think that's a good idea. So I'm really, the latest incident, there were several of the, all the people at that Umpqua Community College. Then there were two incidents in Arizona and Texas with more shooting and more deaths. It's just incredible. And we just have to take a stance opposing any kind of weapons in schools. So I strongly support this and I was very eager to take a position on it.
Richard, please, and then Lupe?
Well, it's no accident that a lot of these school shootings have taken place where guns are outlawed and only the outlaw has a gun. Personally, I think this measure is, the issue that this measure addresses is left to the local school. They know the culture, they know the safety, they know whether it's more dangerous to, more likely to have an injury due to an accident with a gun than due to... They know the culture, they know the safety, they know whether it's more dangerous to, more likely to have an injury due to an accident with a gun than due to violence. So I'm going to vote against this particular resolution, not because I'm convinced that the state senate bill is correct, I'm just not sure that we can speak across the board for every school culture in Michigan.
Thank you, Richard. Lupe, and then Eileen.
Well, I am very much in support of the statement that we're discussing here today. As a former teacher and principal, and so on and so on, for the many years that I taught in schools, there's no way that I can visualize a building, when I was the principal of a building, people coming in with weapons, whether it be concealed or open carry. I see that they are a detriment to the culture of any school, any school. Children should not be exposed to weapons. I worked in schools where weapons were used in their homes, drive-by shootings, and those are the pictures that these children had in their brains. So if they saw these weapons in the schools, it would even be more detriment to their safety, if they felt it. So guns in schools are absolutely a no. And we're not saying that people cannot own guns, that's not the issue here. The issue here is that weapons do not belong in schools, and that's the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen, please, and then Rick.
So I have a unique perspective on this, because of course, I have a child who was guarded by men with Kalashnikovs for three years of his life. And I, like Richard, am concerned about constitutional rights and community mores. I, like Lupe, cannot imagine somebody walking into a school with a gun on their cap. I've been there. So I will be voting for this, but the clash of constitutional rights versus children's rights is definitely there. And I also think that this is not the place for guns. It's personal, personal as opposed to constitutional or legal interpretation.
Rick, please.
As a classroom teacher, I like to believe that I base my practice on evidence. And the evidence that I've read and that I've seen, and the commentary that I've heard, espouses the fact that, or the reality, that the presence of guns in schools is not a detriment to these kinds of mass shootings, and that there are other mechanisms and other policies that need to be in place, both at the federal, perhaps federal, state, and local levels, in order to prevent the kinds of shootings that we've seen, and that have become sort of de rigueur in our country. So I would definitely support this statement as written.
Seeing no further discussion, a motion has been made, seconded and discussed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-1. Next item, please, Cassandra.
Thank you. The next item that we'd like to bring to your attention is in regards to the third grade reading bill. We had a lot of conversation about this bill. In fact, I think we're about to have even more conversation, because there's some suggestions on ways we could actually improve the legislation. Essentially, I'll read the statement, but essentially, what we're saying here is that there's a lot of good stuff in this bill, a lot of things that we really like, but there are many of us that have real concerns about a state-mandated retention piece of the bill. So the statement reads, "The State Board of Education believes that reading at grade level is an important part of a student's successful education. House Bill 4822 has the potential to aid the Michigan Department of Education, schools, administrators, teachers, and parents in moving the needle forward on reading proficiency for the children in our state. The current bill initiates many education strategies aimed at supporting and improving the necessary work for all Michigan children to read at grade level by the end of third grade. These positive strategies include comprehensive core classroom reading instruction, early literacy coaches, reading intervention programs in grades K through 3, summer reading camps, diagnostic reading assessments, and recognition of developmental obstacles in reading. While the State Board of Education is a strong supporter of these positive strategies, the board remains opposed to the concept of smart promotion/retention, which currently remains in the bill. While there are situations where retaining students in their current grade is warranted, that decision needs to be decided on a case-by-case basis between teachers and parents. It should not be automatic. The State Board of Education urges members of the state legislature to provide the supports and positive strategies to help all students read at grade level without the mandate of grade retention that is currently, that currently is written in House Bill 4822."
Is there a motion to approve?
I am so moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, please. Eileen?
Hi. I've sent the board a letter saying that I couldn't vote for this policy, this statement as-is. And at lunch today, listened to the superintendent describe what Dearborn has put into place, which, if I have it correctly, is an interesting compromise. In my eyes, retention has to remain on the table, because this state has fallen behind year after year after year on NAEP, and our own internal MEEP scores have shown the same results. We don't know what MSUP shows yet. So from what I understand, or from what I could see happening, I would propose that we consider asking the House to recraft a section of the bill that would provide Michigan Department of Education oversight on district retention policies that have to be submitted to us for approval, to ensure that proper student evaluation and additional intervention, along with family involvement, would take place. Should districts not provide that, that mandatory retirement, mandatory retention would be required. And this would cause, I think, this would, this would give a similar support mechanism that the House has proposed, which is that there are things that need to be done, fourth through third graders, when they reach the point where they are still a year to a year and a half behind. And I think you said the Dearborn policy was a year. Educators have expressed to me in the past that up to a year and a half is something that is fairly normal developmentally. What I'm trying to point out is that there needs to be some teeth to this. There are a ton of new requirements going into place, which for many districts are very far away from the approaches and the intervention strategies that they're using now. We've heard, I've heard personally, that a number of districts aren't using anything that's research-based for evaluating children. And our goal here should be to help children. I don't want to get stuck on whether we're being unfair to districts. What I need us to be is fair to children, and give every child the opportunity to be reading at grade level. They've got story problems coming up, social studies, all manner of things that have to have reading comprehension in fourth grade. Not giving them the chance to be able to do that well is short-sighted, and our dropout rates show it.
So are you making a motion to amend this and adding your statement?
I think I am. The problem would be that I'm not sure I have the wording down correctly. And I think that if we could hammer that out, we would at least know whether the board could agree on it. And it would be based on what you were able to do in Dearborn.
Good. John?
And I'm not sure how you might articulate that, but I guess I would, before we decide that way to go, I would just like to, maybe different observation, different recommendation. I mean, from the get-go, we, and certainly the advocates of this legislation, all of them have wanted to say, and insist, that we as a state help all kids learn at third grade level on time. It's gone, this bill has evolved a lot from something that first appeared to be just make that demand and mandate, or they're retained, without providing the tools and help and support that help deliver on that expectation. And it's really come a long way towards providing lots of important tools and supports and aids that help kids hit that mark, which we must help them do. So I compliment legislators and Amanda Price and others for that. And Karen, with the governor's office, who's not here, we were talking at lunch, was, they haven't taken a formal position, but she was describing that there are important tangible tools and enablers in this legislation that do a lot of good things to help all kids read at third grade level. So on the mandatory retention piece, I still don't necessarily think we, I don't support a mandatory retention. I think the goal of this legislation, as it is now, is to help us deliver on that goal of helping all kids read at third grade. Locals can still retain kids, it should be a local decision about how they manage that. I think if, as I understand, the legislature is, some are saying, we have to have that kind of stick, or this won't work. I'm for supporting this statement. I would, we could add a sentence, Eileen, potentially, that would say, should legislation that includes mandatory retention be moved, here's some recommendations on best-practice ways to do that, that would be more helpful than hurtful. You know, I'm not sure how to do that, but I appreciate also you're looking for a formula that delivers on the promise of helping kids read at third grade level, and tries to qualify or work with this accountability provision in some way that's constructive, not destructive. I still think it's sort of destructive to have that. You can't mandate kids to read. We have to do all the things to help them to read, and that's where we are, for the most part, in this bill now.
Richard, please.
I should know this, but how do we determine third grade reading level? Is that the middle of the third grade? Is it what you're supposed to know by the end of third grade? Is a child reading in the second month of third grade regarded as reading on the third grade level and can go on to fourth grade, or how is that determined?
Ms. Jean?
The end of third grade would be the benchmark with that, because you want to make sure that they've had that full year. And if you're saying, as the legislature, the legislation says that they cannot go on to fourth grade, so they have to have--
So at the end of third grade, they'd have to be at that reading level, be within a year of that.
So then it's June. How does that standard compare with the statistical average?
All right. So what do you mean, how does, which compare, how's that end? Say your question again, please.
Well, we have a third grade reading standard, and how does that compare with the average reading achievement of kids at the end of third grade?
Well, technically, now with our new standards, the board adopted in 2010, we actually have English language, language arts standards. We don't have reading standards anymore. And so, the way, it's, this is what gets a little complicated with this bill and with this discussion, is what makes intuitive sense to people is the idea that there is like a bucket of learning that you get, and you're either all the way, you know, you're some percentage of the way through the bucket.
Right.
But really, the way standards are set up is it's not, you can have achieved like a proficient level of the standards and still have more to develop.
Sure.
It's not quite, it's not, it doesn't correlate your question, I'm trying to figure out how to answer your statistical average question. I think in terms of having kids proficient in ELA by the end of third grade, and if our goal is having all kids proficient in ELA, or have acquired enough of the standards to be on track, you know, be able to move forward, and how that compares with our average, I think the, we don't have the MSUP data. The MEEP data, the NAEP data would say, we aren't where we need to be. So this is an aspirational goal. This is a thing that we would need to work toward. Is that kind of what you're asking about?
Well, the average, the average reading ability of a child at the end of third grade is, means that half the kids wouldn't go on.
Right. And that's, and that's why our standards are built on standards acquisition, not, they're not normative. It's a criteria. So there are things that kids need to know and do, and--
But that standards acquisition will, some percentage of kids will fall, presumably fall below it, and we can predict that 10% or 20% of the kids will, will not have attained that standard by the end of third grade.
Again, it's, we can't, we will be able to. It's hard right now without the new MSUP data, because that's really, because then we even have to get into what percentage of kids are not proficient across all of the ELA standards. There's four claims within ELA, and then looking specifically at the reading claim, asking the question, if this is how many kids are, have enough reading to be totally on track, this is, this is how many kids do not have enough and are definitely in trouble. There's actually a middle ground, where they're not all the way to where we need them to be, but they're--
Exactly, yeah.
So we will have all that data, but I don't have a good answer for you now. My guess is that number that really are not anywhere near where they need to be is a relatively small percentage. States like Ohio that have done this have found it to be in the 3% to 4%, 5% range. But then there's that middle part that we certainly have to still address, but they're not, they're movable with some targeted interventions, I guess.
Okay. Thank you. Like a lot of great ideas, it seems like the devil is in detail.
Yes. So John, did some, oh, I'm sorry, Michelle?
I had, I just had some questions. So I see in the third paragraph, it refers to the bill recognizing developmental obstacles in reading, and I guess this is to you, Marty. Do they actually, besides recognizing, do they actually have resources or programming to, like for dyslexia, for instance, to address and to actually help them read? So if they have an IEP, do they just get passed along, or are there, is it mandatory to provide them, I know, I know it's up to the IEP to decide, but is there anything legislatively that reinforces that they're supposed to get what they need to be able to read? And I'm looking, I'm thinking specifically of dyslexia, because I'm told that there's, they often, it's very expensive to diagnose, and even when they have an outside diagnosis, they might not, they might not be successful in getting an IEP. So I'm concerned about that group. Is there, is there anything in there besides saying, we will recognize it? Is there anything to address those concerns?
Well, the legislation talks about having programs and opportunities to have support for the kids who aren't meeting the standard.
But it doesn't make any specific reference to dyslexia, like the reading disability?
No.
Okay. And I also wanted to just share a conversation that I had with someone from Florida Education Association, their education policy director, because there's often references made to Florida doing this, and being cited as a success story. And she said that it was, it's, sometimes the statistics are used in a misleading way. For instance, they say that people refer to how the fourth grade reading is improved. Well, she said, of course, the fourth grade reading scores will improve, because you're holding back all the third graders who aren't doing well, so it's going to automatically give you, and it's sort of a false sense of success due to that policy, but it's not really a success, it's just, they're not being tested with the fourth grade. And also, that the advances or that bump-up they get in the fourth grade is, usually disappears by the eighth grade, and that by the 12th grade, the state regresses on their reading scores. So over the long term, is it really an effective, does it really get at what we're trying to get at? If it's, if it's a regression, if it's just, I mean, I think we should look at the evidence to whether it's really effective in helping students, you know, graduate, you know, with better skills and higher standards. If it's, there's also no study in Florida so far, although there's been calls for it, to look at the impact of, on the kids who are retained, and how that affects them as far as being, dropping out. There's no study, the state has, the Department of Education, as I understand it, is not collecting the data to even have folks look at that. And that, that would be a very interesting data, that I think would be very informative, but unfortunately, it's not available.
So, Michelle, I think you've made some good points that I want to respond to. First of all, having a guidepost or a stick in the ground that says third grade reading is important, and making sure districts are reporting to kids and families on what their students are at at grade level, and what we're doing to get them, I think will lead to improved reading scores. But the focus has to be preschool through 12th grade. We can't just stop here in third grade. So certainly, the promising practices and the work the department is going to share with school districts is going to be what we need to be doing preschool through 12th grade, reading, writing across the curriculum, so that you not only get that growth for third grade or fourth grade, but it continues to grow as you work through the grades. I agree with you, if we absolutely just put a flag in the ground and say, third grade is it, and that's all we do, we may or may not get growth. I think we'd get a little growth, but we're not going to sustain it. So we have to focus, regardless of what the legislature does, we need to focus preschool through 12th grade on reading and writing across the curriculum, and sharing those promising practices with districts, and really focus them looking at preschool through 12th grade. Kathleen?
I'm glad you brought that up. I'm glad you said what you said now, Brian, because I was concerned about that, too, that that, you know, the legislature might say, well, we took care of it, everybody's supposed to be able to read, and we don't have to do anything else. And it isn't true.
It is not true.
So I want to put the emphasis on, it's a continuum through, through the entire school experience. And reading should be something that they-- And reading should be something that they, that other teachers focus on as well, just about the first three years. So that's very important. The other thing is that Rick told us today, and I had heard this before, that Patricia Palacchio, who's, I forgot her name. Didn't learn to read until she was, she was 14. And I would say that, I've talked to parents whose kids didn't learn to read until they were in the sixth grade. And I don't, I support this because we more or less, it's, it's an issue that we have to, we can't just ignore, I don't think. But I don't want people to think that that's, there aren't exceptions to this. Not everybody, no matter what intervention we do, is going to be able to read by this, by the third, into the third grade.
And they end up being very successful.
Right. And they turn out to be fine, upstanding citizens who can read at everything.
I have Eileen, and then Richard.
So I'm, I'm not talking about, I have a kid who's dysgraphic, and it didn't hurt him the way that dyslexia would, but it continually hampers him. And fortunately, he's been in places where people have been able to reach out and to do something constructive. Also, the math, math processing disorder, but we're not talking about math. I'm talking about the kids who aren't getting help. I'm talking about the districts which have not taken the initiative to do things that are available to them. I'm talking about the children we're losing every single year. And what I'm anxious about with this statement is it sends a signal that, that, I want this statement to be something that shows our passion for those children, not for worrying about their social and emotional well-being if they can't move up with their cohort. It's, it's a great statement, but I think the situation that we're in right now calls for something stronger. So I'm anxious to see the statement and to see the kind of sentence that John was saying could be put in. But the reality for me is, I'm not seeing the urgency from this board with that statement. I see it in our conversations. I hear it every day. I know that we're all there. I, you know, I hear it in the comments that are being made at the board table right now. But I'm really anxious that we acknowledge the urgency of the situation.
We'll go to Richard, then Cassandra. When you're done, I didn't mean to.
Yes.
Sentence for you.
So.
I'm waiting with bated breath for one.
All right, Richard, then Cassandra.
I just wanted to, I guess, belabor the obvious to some of us and maybe overlooked by others. You know, the nature of reading instruction changes from third grade to fourth grade. The first three years, you concentrate on word attack skills and mastering a certain number of, of sight words, and then with those skills behind you, then you work on fluency and vocabulary expansion and that sort of thing in the upper grades. That's why the, that's why the break is put at third grade, because then you have another chance to reinforce those skills that presumably haven't been mastered going on. Just wanted to throw that out.
Cassandra, please.
So I think what this statement makes clear is that we're not saying we're opposed to retention per se. We're opposed to state mandated retention, or at least that's what I'm saying. So here's my potential solution, and you tell me if it gets to what you're talking about. At the end of the fourth paragraph, the one that starts while the State Board of Education, I would recommend adding a sentence that would read, "While there are situations where retaining students in their current grade is warranted, that decision needs to be decided on a case-by-case basis between teachers and parents. It should not be automatic. Instead of requiring retention at the state level, the SBE recommends requiring local districts to develop a local plan related to retention and promotion, which shall be approved by the Michigan Department of Education."
And that's what I was proposing at lunch. What's the alternative if they don't develop it?
Well, if it's in law, they have to develop it.
And what happens if it's half-baked and we know it's not going to get them anyplace?
Well, it sounds like, way that's written, does it give me the authority to approve or not approve?
It should. I mean, that's the only way I would, that's the only way I would.
So if we don't approve it, then we tell them what they have to do to fix it. If they don't do anything, I think we have a.
They're not going to have to do.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. If we, if they don't do it, I think there's penalties in the school aid for not following the law that could be issued.
Can we check on that? Because that, that is, that's what's driving me. I, I want to put together a bill that has the supports, has the, has the, the focus on better practices, better techniques, and make sure that these kids actually get to third grade with this either resolved or a solid, solid plan for it to be resolved. If that's not in there, or if there's a loophole, then we're going to be right where we are now with every district that's not doing this. It'll, it'll take years and decades as opposed to years, months and years.
So do we, do we want to have an amendment?
The solution, yeah. But could you add?
It's called Dan Varner.
Could you add the word enforceable to part of your language? That just gives us, make sure that, but there is a way to enforce something.
For approval by the State Board, by the Department of Education.
I don't know where I would, you tell me where to add that.
I had down.
You could put it in.
I, I had something that started, should districts not provide an appropriate retention policy for MDE approval?
You could say, say, the SBA recommends legislation that develops an enforceable requirement on local districts to develop a local plan, da, 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 da.
Enforceable, yeah.
Okay.
And there's a lot of ways that could be accomplished. He's got the authority. If they don't do it, there's penalty.
All right, so is there a motion to add this?
I'm sorry, they would say through existing laws or new, or new legislation, something like that?
Okay, so is there a motion to accept the amendment?
A motion. I read it.
All right, it's been moved and supported. So first, first voting on the amendment. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the amendment?
Yeah, I would.
Want to read it again?
I'll read the whole paragraph so you guys understand the context in which is. The paragraph will read, "While the State Board of Education is a strong supporter of these positive strategies, the board remains opposed to the concept of smart promotion slash retention, which currently remains in the bill. While there are situations where retaining students in their current grade is warranted, that decision needs to be, needs to be decided, typo, on a case-by-case basis between teachers and parents. It should not be automatic. Instead of requiring retention at the state level, the SBE recommends requiring local districts to develop an enforceable local plan related to retention and promotion, which shall be approved by the Michigan Department of Education."
Okay, so voting on that amendment only.
Okay, I would amend one word in the previous sentence. Instead of teachers and parents, it should be, I believe, schools and parents, because it's not just an individual teacher.
We're about educators.
That's great.
Okay.
That's just friendly. We're just going to accept that as friendly, right? We're not going to have a motion on top of a motion. All right, so all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so the amendment passes. Now we have the full statement. Any other discussion on the full statement? Seeing none, it has already been moved and seconded. No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries eight, zero. Cassandra, number three.
Final one. This is in regard to the educator evaluation systems and Senate Bill 103 in particular. It reads, "The State Board of Education supports a fair and balanced educator evaluation system," typo. "In order to realize this outcome, Michigan needs a more consistent educator evaluation system based on consistent observation tools and practices, consistent approaches to determining student growth, and incorporating growth measures into evaluation ratings, and the seamless integration of the evaluation process and outcomes with the identification and implementation of professional learning goals. The State Board of Education appreciates the governor and the state legislature for their work in commissioning and supporting the final report of the Michigan Council for Educator Effectiveness headed by Dr. Deborah Ball, and for the ongoing efforts of both the House and the Senate to draft legislation in support of Michigan's educator evaluation efforts. The legislature currently is crafting and deliberating on Senate Bill 103, its latest version of amending the revised school code to improve the local teacher and administrator evaluation systems. The State Board of Education reaffirms its support for a final product that remains faithful to the consensus recommendations in the Ball report of the Michigan Council for Educator Effectiveness. Any effort to shave off integral components of that report will weaken the fair and evidence-based evaluation strategies contained within it."
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there support? Discussion, please. Michelle?
As I mentioned earlier, I think, you know, I would have a difficult time supporting this, although I do believe that the idea of it being a fair and balanced educator evaluation system, sort of, it gets, it gets at it.
The Fox News of evaluation.
Yeah, maybe.
Might want to choose some other word.
Yeah, really. But I think what is, what would make it fair and balanced is a meaningful appeals process to ensure that it's never abused, or to ensure that there's, it's less likely to be abused. I think when someone has a lot of power to determine someone's employment and that person doesn't have an opportunity to, to counter it, I think that it sets up a dynamic where it can be abused, and bias can set in. It needs to, there needs to be checks and balances on it, and, and I, I would like to include something that, that we encourage. It's not us, you know, it's legislated, so it's not something that we control, but I would like to support, hope that we can support an idea that in those cases where there's a potential for abuse, that there's a means to address it fairly for the person being evaluated. So I would like there to be a sentence that would be added that speaks to the, the board encourages, or the legis, oh, she's. Thank you. Cut to the chase.
No, no, no.
And includes an appropriate appeals process. So at the end of the, for the second paragraph after goals is a comma, and it's, so the sent, well, it's a long sentence. "In order to realize this outcome, Michigan needs a more consistent educator evaluation system based on consistent observation tools and practices, consistent approaches to determining student growth, incorporating growth measures into evaluation, into evaluation ratings, and seamless integration of the evaluation process and outcomes with the identification and implementation of professional learning goals," and that, that includes an appropriate, and that includes an appropriate appeals process.
So are you making that motion, Michelle?
Yes.
My second.
It's been moved and supported. This is just on the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Did you read it again?
Did you read it? It's the second paragraph, and it says, "In order to realize this outcome, Michigan needs a more consistent educator evaluation system based on consistent observation tools and practices, consistent approaches to determining student growth, and incorporating growth measures into evaluation ratings, and the seamless integration of the evaluation process and outcomes with the identification of, and implementation of professional learning goals, and includes an appropriate appeals process."
It's been moved and supported. Pam, question?
Yes. Maybe from the discussion that we had earlier this morning, and you talked about the appeals process, is that going to come across as though that appeals process could occur within that school, or does it have to be, because you're talking about something a little bit more formal, or that comes to MDE, or?
Yeah, so maybe a.
Independent.
Yeah, so I see what you're saying, an independent, appropriate appeals process by a neutral third party, or, I don't know if it's, let me see, by an outside, I don't know, and maybe there's a meaningful or effective.
Appeals process.
Appeals process. But the idea is that it wouldn't be, it would be somebody who's away from the environment who could come in and look at what's going on.
Vanessa said meaningful appeals process. I don't know, but it.
Third party?
Yeah, I'm thinking third party, outside, independ, yeah, I don't know, independent.
Yeah, I, yeah, I see what you're getting at. Yeah, I think that, that would improve it, I think, if that was included.
Okay, so let's vote down this amendment, and then we're going to come up with another one, okay? So that's easier than going and amending and amending and amending. So we have the motion on the floor.
They can accept the amendment.
Yeah, I could have done a friendly.
Well, if you're willing to do that, but that's not really Robert's rules.
Oh, well.
We've never done it right before.
Okay, I'm just trying to keep us on the narrow. I'm trying to keep us on the narrow.
It's the maker of the motion who accepts the amendment.
Thank you. I've been waiting for this moment.
I'm trying to keep us on the narrow.
These people are bored with parliamentary procedure.
Well, help us with an amendment now.
I would be willing to.
That's yours.
A friendly amendment that says meaningful?
That says appropriate slash independent or meaningful?
Independent, third party.
Meaningful could be analyzed by anybody.
Is third party or independent? Yeah, independent.
Appropriate slash independent. How's that?
All right, that's a friendly amendment we're not going to vote on.
Correct.
It's accepting it, that's fine.
That's good, all right. So now we have the original motion, no, the amended motion, right, first. The amended motion first. All those in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. Now we have the question on the adoption of the full recommendation. It's been moved, seconded. Any further discussion?
Can you read it? It's the full recommendation, which would be the rest of it.
All right, so can we have one more reading of the full statement?
The entire statement or just the end?
Just a second, I want to.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, Kathleen.
Vanessa said this more than very well stated, that this is, the evaluation process is to improve the practice of teachers, good teachers even better. And I'd like to get that sentiment in this statement, that the evaluation process itself is to improve, I'm sorry, document. The evaluation process is, is not punitive, it's to improve the practice of teachers.
We've got it from this morning, and perhaps Kathleen, just the first sentence could read as it is and add something that, that supports effective teaching and improved student learning, per Vanessa's.
Student learning, but it doesn't say.
Right here. Is that what you want?
Supports effective teaching and improved student learning is language that our team gave us this morning.
Effective teaching and improved student learning, that's what you said many times.
That might be better, but yeah, I want it to be positive.
That'd be the first sentence.
It's done for a positive purpose, not an punitive.
So we're adding an amendment that says, at the end of the first sentence, "The purpose of educator evaluations is to support effective teaching and improved student learning." Someone move that motion?
It's already written down right here.
It's moved and supported. Everybody can read it on the front page. All those in favor of the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries, what's that?
Aye.
All right, seven, one. All right, so now we need to reread the whole document, please.
"The State Board of Education supports a fair and balanced educator evaluation system. The purpose of educator evaluations is to support effective teaching and improve student learning. In order to realize this outcome, Michigan needs a more consistent educator evaluation system based on consistent observation tools and practices, consistent approaches to determining student growth, and incorporating growth measures into evaluation ratings, and the seamless integration of evaluation process and outcomes with the identification and implementation of professional learning goals, and includes an appropriate slash independent appeals process. The State Board of Education appreciates the governor and the state legislature for their work in commissioning and supporting the final report of the Michigan Council for Educator Effectiveness headed by Dr. Deborah Ball, and for the ongoing efforts of both the House and the Senate to draft legislation in support of Michigan's educator evaluation efforts. The legislature currently is crafting and deliberating on Senate Bill 103, its latest version of amending the revised school code to improve the local teacher and administrator evaluation systems. The State Board of Education reaffirms its support for a final product that remains faithful to the consensus recommendations in the Ball report of the Michigan Council for Educator Effectiveness. Any effort to shave off integral components of that report will weaken the fair and evidence-based evaluation strategies contained within it."
Okay, it's been moved and it's been supported. Seeing no further questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries eight, zero. Cassandra, do you have anything else?
That is it?
All right, Pam has something.
Did I just say something about the ESEA?
As soon as Pam is done.
Pam is up.
Pam is up, and then I'll call on you, Eileen.
Kathleen.
Kathleen. Eileen, Kathleen, you two shouldn't sit next to each other.
I agree. I think they have.
The legislative...
Sorry.
Sent an email a week or so ago, after Boehner was out, from the speakership, saying that this makes the prospects for ESEA revision passing much less. He said, "Not only has Boehner announced his resignation, but Chairman John Klein from the House Education Committee has announced he's going to retire, he's not going to run for reelection," which, and he's been working to try to get the recalcitrant House members to bend a little, I guess, and support something that's acceptable in the Senate. So the things don't look too positive now, especially now with the whole business with the Speaker. That's, maybe a new Speaker will bring him together, but I'm not holding my breath. So things don't look too positive at the moment. Maybe, maybe there'll be a turnaround, but that's the way it looked a couple of days ago.
Thank you, Kathleen. All right, Pam, you have the statement on Flint Water, please.
Yes, so we talked about Flint Water. Actually, we began our discussion in our State Board Health Education, or Health Subcommittee meeting. And last week, I put out a statement, but it was for myself, and it basically was circulated through social media. And after further thought, I thought that I wanted to put out a more formal statement, being with my background in environmental health educationally, as well as my work experience. Most of my work experience has been around childhood lead poisoning and making sure that we reduce those levels, especially in our urban centers. Then after finding out, Superintendent Bryant Wiston and I were at one of the schools that was just found to have an elevated level within the water system there at one of the schools. So I wanted to share this, and I think what I'll do is I will read it, and then I also have some proposals that I want to read on the back. So for the past 18 months, Flint residents have complained about the quality of their water and suspected health effects. They complained of hair loss, skin rashes, and even vomiting after drinking the water. Although their concerns were mainly disregarded by the state and city officials, a study by researchers at Flint's Hurley Medical Center substantiated their escalating fears and gave their plight national attention. This study, along with the water analysis by a Virginia Tech professor and a petition to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, provided the empirical evidence of rising childhood blood levels and revealed overlooked records of high lead levels in the city's drinking water. A wealth of research shows that even a small amount of lead in a child's body can cause serious health problems. Studies have demonstrated lead's compromising effects on the immune system in association with impairments and neurobehavioral factors such as child's learning skills, hearing, and self-regulatory ability resulting in delinquent behavior. According to the filed petition, Flint's drinking water also tested positive for total coliform, an indicator of possible sewage and fecal contamination. It is further noted that the city's treatment of the water to address the coliform resulted in elevated levels of a byproduct of disinfection associated with liver, kidney, central nervous system problems, and increased risk of cancer. The assertions made by the residents, petitioners, and others has been proven and is now known that the water issues are linked to residents being moved from their water source of over 50 years from the Detroit Water and Sewage Department to an inadequately examined water source and delivery system from the Flint River. It has also been confirmed that this decision was at the helm of numerous and differing emergency managers appointed by Governor Rick Snyder to fix Flint's budget problems. The budget fixed tactics that have forced Flint's young children to drink lead-laced water can contribute to their lower academic performance. Academic performance is a primary measure used to initiate state school districts or state takeover of Michigan schools. Additionally, a recent news report states that parents are pulling their children from Flint public schools at a loss of 300 more students than initially projected. This decline in enrollment would lead to a loss in school revenue and a greater budget deficit, making easier for a state takeover of Flint public schools. While Flint's poisonous water has shed light in callous decisions that continue to risk the health and well-being of our most vulnerable Michigan citizens, other low-income children are also casualties of such policies. After more than six years of failed state takeover style of governance, Detroit Public Schools finances and academic outcomes have worsened with a destabilized education system, destabilized education system, decreased academic outcomes, and increased deficit upward of $335 million. Governor Snyder, through executive orders and proposed legislation, continues an attempt to extend policies in an autocratic form of governance that usurps local control and power from Michigan residents. Unless we interject, areas in Michigan will continue to live under the threat of becoming U.S. sacrifice zones, where costs are cut, budgets are balanced, and profits are made at the expense of the health and well-being of our children, especially our most burdened children living in low-income families. Therefore, I propose the following. MDE work with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to ensure that all Flint parents, guardians are offered blood lead testing for their children at convenient locations, including schools. And I do believe Representative Sheldon Neely has already asked of this and if we could support that. The State Board of Education and State Superintendent of Instruction petition SRO to halt processes that will lead to further state takeovers of schools and districts or formation of state districts. Number three, the State of Education, State Board of Education exhausts every effort to determine how to restore the adequate checks and balances set in place by our Constitution and stripped by Executive Order 2015-9, transferring the School Reform Office and all accountability initiatives from the MDE to the Department of Technology Management and Budget. And this is signed by me.
That's a very powerful statement. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And so I will email this, so you have it.
Can I ask a question? I had heard that it's schools that were built after 1985 have higher chances of leaching lead, and it might not just be contained in Flint, but throughout the state. And so I didn't know if you had any data on that, if I heard that correctly, or...
I don't have any data, but I know, and I work primarily in home, so I can speak from what I know, is that every morning I get up and I flush my water system for about 32 seconds. And that is because water is typically acidic. If there are no corrosion controls, I'm assuming that the pH could be even further off. But typically, if water stays overnight within a system, there's typically like a buildup between the pipes and the water. So the water that sits overnight because of the acidity, then it can uptake that lead. The lead is in the solder of the pipe. So, and that is in housing built after, built before 1986, '85, '86. So I would imagine, I mean, there's things that we've always talked about to take proper precautions, but then when you don't have testing, adequate testing of the water as well as the system of that water. So I think in Flint, what they're seeing is not only that it was 1986 pipes, but it's also the corrosion controls and all of those things that are in place. So I mean, you have to take all of those factors into consideration. So it may not be the fact that there's solder in the pipe, but it may be that whole water system. So you have to test all of those things together. That would be my answer.
I also was wondering, and Marty, maybe you, or Brian, maybe you can help me understand. So the MDE regulates the food that the kids eat? Are they somehow responsible for ensuring that children get food that is healthy and...
Yes, I mean, we have federal requirements that we follow and make sure that schools meet those standards, and that's under Kyle's department.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, so if a school, because I am aware that there are other schools that have lead. So the regulatory framework is, so I know there's OSHA for employees, so that there's regulations on lead exposure there. And MDE, if they're involved in the preparing of food to make sure, I would assume that there was some way, some regulatory way to control, making sure that the food is healthy and not toxic. But then also DEQ, and I'm not really sure. So if, if a community, or let's say someone tests the water, because you can just buy these kits and have it done yourself, what is, what is the avenue to ensure that there'll be some, that these issues will be addressed? And what's, what process should be taken to go to a regulatory agency? If you've already gone to folks and the administration and the board, and there's, and by the way, there's a disincentive now because people will just choose to go someplace else, as you pointed out. So there's an incentive to kind of keep it hush because people don't want to lose students because they'll lose funding. But so, so my question is how, what regulatory agency are out there to address this? And how, you know, where do they go? Where does a parent or teacher or whoever go?
We're going to be engaging with the other state departments, working at the direction of the governor in terms of the other state departments, working to educate families and school districts on how they can go about testing, and the state will do the testing at a cost of, I think it's around $26 per test site. So the state will do, they'll do the testing, or you can take it to a private source. If a problem is found, then it's DEQ's responsibility to be involved, because there are standards that have to be met in terms of the water quality.
Not only for the water and for, you mentioned food preparation, we have oversight of what we provide funding for school issues repair. So I think that's part of the child nutrition programs, we have oversight of whether or not they meet the nutritional guidelines. Now, in the case of food preparation, if there was salmonella or some other thing, you know, the Health Department is the one that has the means to test and the authority to shut an operation down, whether it's at a school or whether it's in an apple use.
So it's DHHS?
And DEQ, the local public health department is the one in this case.
Local, okay.
Have the authority to say, you can take your...
Cassandra, please.
I think that answered my question, but I just want to make sure, when you said the testing of the site, you're talking about the water, not necessarily the children.
Correct.
Okay.
You're talking about what?
You're talking, he's talking about testing the water, not necessarily testing the children.
Oh, yeah.
Because I, I agree that I think these parents need to know what they're dealing with at this point, and we should support, if there's a piece of legislation that says the state is going to aid these families in having their children tested, because there's going to be long-term impacts that they're going to have to start dealing with now, I think the state should help these families in understanding what, what they're going to be presented with over the next lifetime of their child.
Yeah, and so these, with the testing, there is testing that's done for Medicaid children, but it's at ages one and two, or if they've missed that 36 months and like 72 months. So some of these children may miss that mark. The other thing is that, so the age, I mean, if a child falls outside of that age, then they need to be, provided the opportunity to be tested. And then the convenience of the testing. It needs to be something that we definitely consider having at the school sites, or something where, that's accessible to the children. And then one of the other issues with the testing of the water is how you test the water as well. So that was one of the issues with why there were discrepancies in numbers. So that's very, that's very important with the person who's doing the sampling, not just the testing site, but how the testing is done. I remember taking three samples because that tells from which service line or where the problem could lie. And so you want to separate those out. You don't want to blend sampling. And then you also don't want to blend sampling from different areas within a community. Well, in that particular case, because some people, some households were not on that water source, so.
So John, that's testing, are we testing the community's water supply, or the school's water supply, or both? He would be responsible for educating on how to test at the school sites. Others would be...
Yeah, and DEQ's done both, when they're doing it by zip code, but they've tested specific schools as well.
Because the health departments would not be testing for any type of heavy metal in food or water. So that would have to be something that would be, come from, that would be something new. I don't recall, when I was there, I don't know that that's happening now.
So is there any, is there any...
Michelle?
Sorry, I'm just...
No, go. Michelle?
So I know that there used to be resources for lead abatement, lead identification, I believe that in the school system, if I understand right, and like in Detroit. But I don't believe, I think those resources are gone. And my understanding is, sort of like, it's feeling like, you know, that's kind of like the 80s and 90s, we're past that now. We're obviously not. And as you point out, the infrastructure below the ground is even more, you know, suspect than above the ground. So are there resources for, you know, abatement? You know, I know Flint has drawn our attention, and that deserves immediate attention, but I'm worried about other places across the state as well. And its implication for student achievement. I mean, there's, U of M did that study that shows it correlates exactly, you know, the more lead you have, the less well you do on standardized tests. It also affects your behavior, you know, so, so is there any programming out here within the department or in statewide that anyone knows about that focuses on lead abatement?
Not that we're aware of, but we will do some research and get back to you.
Most of it was federal funding from CDC or HUD. And so that funding has dwindled. Some of the programming has gone away. State funding that was allocated, I believe, has dwindled as well.
All right.
And it was competitive. I mean, each community has to write for that grant and...
Thank you. Kathleen, please.
I think it's likely that schools in Detroit that are older, there are some new schools in Detroit, but in Hamtramck, I don't think there's been any new schools since 1930, unless something went up in the last couple of years that I missed.
There's a lot of schools around the state that are, were built.
But so, you know, it's likely that this is going to be an expensive proposition.
As I was pointing out...
The state's going to have to step up to this somehow.
I mean, the schools are one thing, but it's everything below ground that carries water that is very...
Well, that's what I mean, but those are probably lead pipes in those.
They're old everywhere.
They're old.
And in Detroit, they're 100 years old.
Yeah, at the Hamtramck and Highland Park.
And they're falling apart. The problem, if I understand, is listening to the, in switching over, they didn't get the anti-corrosion treatment right. And so, old pipes are everywhere, and if you somehow aren't getting your treatment right to prevent the lead corrosion, it just is there.
Hopefully, the Detroit water system has been doing it right, so it won't be a problem.
Well, their water apparently is a little different, too, I guess.
But it's, you know, that's, the potential is quite huge.
We'll have to face up to that.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, what was your motion?
What I said earlier. The State Board of Education supports legislation that ensures all Flint parents and guardians are offered blood lead testing for their children at convenient locations, including schools, provided by the state.
Question? Is, is any, are we doing that now with the joint interagency governor-led?
Certainly testing the water. I don't know if we're testing individuals, people.
I know that Representative Sheldon Neely has proposed that this happen. I don't know where they are. Well, I spoke with him, and I know that they've, I don't think that they've moved on that.
Eileen, please.
I would say urges.
Support legislation?
I said support, sorry. Well, I don't know, I don't know if there's legislation, and I don't know if it's needed. There could be other health authorities that will have to do this in a matter of, as a course of doing business for public safety. I would say urges.
So urges the legislature?
No, just urges that the state, that proper authorities...
Could be the public health department that should be, could do this. And it's just a question of doing it.
So urges the state, without saying...
The state.
I think that will move it faster, yeah.
All right, can you read it now again, please?
Hold on. Okay, I think I have this. Correct me if I'm wrong. The State Board of Education urges the state and, and proper authorities...
Or other proper authorities.
Or other proper authorities to offer blood lead testing for Flint children at convenient locations, including schools, funded by the state.
You could just say free of cost, free of charge.
Someone has to pay for it.
Right.
All right, so we have a, was that moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on it? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Is that it? Marty, anything else from your end? Sandra said no. You're saying no. So then I'm going to move back to approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the regular committee of the whole meeting of September 8, 2015.
Will move.
Been moved, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion?
Can you read that?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed the same.
I have another report.
Motion carries. Uh-oh, watch.
No, I'm just teasing.
Oh. Yay, yay, yay. Okay, the next item is K. The next item on today's agenda is approval of changes to organizational representatives on the Special Education Advisory Committee. There are three education organizations that have requested changes for the representatives on the committee. These organizations are Michigan Association of School Psychologists, Michigan Association of Non-Public Schools, Michigan Elementary and Middle School Principals Association. Board approval is being requested today. Norma Jean and Terry, or Norma Jean?
Just me for now. Basically, what this is within all of the three, the psychologists, the non-public schools, and the Elementary and Middle School Principals Association, the assistant, the delegate, for whatever reason, the delegate was resigned, or took a new position, and therefore the alternate went up to become the delegate, and then an assistant, an alternate was put in their place. Does that make sense?
Yep. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed the same. Motion carries seven, zero. Kathleen's not in the room. Okay, the next item on today's discussion action agenda is the approval of fiscal year 2015-16 camp, Tasma Hida?
Camp T.
Whew, Camp T.
Tasma Hida.
Tasma Hida, we're just going to go with Camp T. At the September 15, 2015 Michigan School for the Blind Trust Fund Committee meeting, members Michelle Fekta and Kathleen Strauss reviewed the fiscal year 2015-16 spending plan for Camp T, which we refer to as Camp T. These items is being presented to the full board for approval at today's meeting. We have Kyle and Jane.
It's Colette.
And Colette is joining us.
Hi.
Kyle?
Thank you. As you know, the board members, Fekta and Strauss are on the, on the committee and met, I think, two weeks ago now to go over the study plan. And I guess just for, for everyone's, everyone's on the same page, kind of a quick what Camp T is.
Camp Tasma Hida, Camp T is originally was a camp for visually impaired students, and now we've been using the camp for any school child, and we have other groups that go there, too. It's a wonderful facility. If anybody ever wants to see it, it's actually, it's a beautiful camp. And we use trust fund money to pay for the maintenance and for all the activity, well, the activities and things. We do charge a little bit for food, helps offset some of the costs of food. It's all funded with trust fund money. And the board sets the budget every year, so we're here to try to get approval for the budget. And the trust fund committee already approves our recommendation.
Is there any questions on Camp T? Seeing none, is there a recommendation to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and supported, any further discussion?
Can I say thanks to Michelle and Kathleen for representing us and taking good care of Camp T?
Well, I'd like to invite or urge all the board members to go visit Camp T. It's, it's an amazing place. It's just amazing to see visually impaired students doing the things that they're doing there. And it's, it's very exciting to see it. And the camp has got a long ways. My first visit to Detroit was probably 20 years ago. It's really, it's really been improved a lot, and this trust fund has been the source of the improvements. So, and the staff is doing a great job, so it really is good and great. I think we should be going around to visit our meetings and other places, and maybe one of them can be Camp T.
I would...
Shell?
It's wonderful, and I would like to, you know, I'm wondering if there's ways to let even more, you know, schools know about this, and sort of through your teachers' network or others. But I, I also love how it is, you know, it takes special care for kids with all different types of abilities, and it's incredibly thoughtful and making experiences that a lot of kids wouldn't get otherwise, and having it available at this camp. And it just seems like kids across the state should know about it. I would also like to see, or us to consider, having our retreat next year there, if that's possible, and so we can, so we can see it.
That's a great idea.
And then actually be out in, in nature, like a, like a real retreat.
I like it.
Like a real retreat.
All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed the same. Motion does carry. Thank you. Next up is consent agenda. Are there any items the board wishes to have removed from the consent agenda prior to the vote? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed the same. Motion carries. Comments by State Board of Ed members? We have had no comments today, so I'm sure you have some.
We were thinking of voting on, what did we do that just now?
John, did you, there was some notion that we would add the...
Oh, yeah.
We're going to vote on something this afternoon.
Right, the moratorium on teacher...
Moratorium on teacher. You can make a motion to do that.
Do we continue the moratorium as recommended?
Moved and supported to add the continual three-year moratorium, three years, on teacher prep institutions. We had a presentation on that at the beginning of today's meeting. Is there moved and supported, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed the same. And I'll remind the board that we will tell you if we get an application, so that you can continue to have the discussion if you so choose. Okay, comments for our board members? Yes, Michelle, please.
I just wanted to follow up on the, some concerns that, that I've received, and I think others have received, about the online social studies text. I know it seems like a lot of work, and I've heard the people who testified have gone into working on the standards, and I believe that the texts, all my texts are a separate process with, that were conducted with the grant from, from MDE and our available resource on the site. I would ask that there be consideration of, you know, doing some heavy revisions of this, possibly suspending the, the books online until those revisions are made, or, but I think there's, it needs, you know, a number of, some very serious, you know, errors have been raised. Now, I haven't looked to compare, to make sure that the, what's being said to me is, you know, I haven't looked at the text thoroughly myself, but I, they've been from some pretty credible sources. And I think we have to, you know, we want to make sure that people are getting, that students are getting accurate information, and, and further and focused review on those texts should be, should be done.
So I will turn it over to Linda in a second, but I do want to remind the board that people, if they do find errors in those books, write on that book, there's opportunities for them to share those errors so that they can be corrected immediately. This is not a department book, it is just something that we're making available as a resource, but we do want anything we provide to be accurate. With that said, Linda, do you have some additional?
So it's accurate that this is a part of the trade grant, the technology readiness infrastructure grant. It was $600,000 was put aside to do some of this work, $300,000 has been expended in this project, $300,000. State educators from across the state have participated in the development of this project, and it is a resource for teachers by teachers. So to the degree that teachers have credibility in what they want to present and what they see as useful tools, this process did cover that. There is an online, as Brian said, there is an online opportunity to make corrections to the text where they're found. For me, in my limited knowledge of all of this, it kind of feels like a Wiki situation, where if you find something on a Wiki page, you can, you know, write in and make corrections and ask for those corrections to be considered. That process is being followed. As of a week and a half ago, there had been one request for a change. That request had been pages long by one of the people that was a part of the article in the paper this morning. And those changes are being looked at to determine if there are changes that need to be made based on that information. I wouldn't deny that we want to have something that's accurate. This is, number one, not a curriculum, number two, not a textbook in the sense of a book that you can order. It is a resource for teachers to use as they see fit. There have been, as of, I think earlier this week, I think yesterday, as of yesterday, over 55,000 downloads around the world, and at a cost savings to school districts of over $5 million. I want accurate material in front of them, I'm not disputing that at all, but I am saying that this has been widely accepted and is being used by educators across the state.
Is, was there a pilot project, or before it was given out to everyone?
Yes.
Were, so it was piloted last academic year, or?
No, it was piloted, well, yeah, the end of last academic year and over the summer, with feedback from educators asked for before they ever went public.
But it wasn't like it was just available to a few districts to sort of pilot the, the texts and to see if they were, if there were any, because, you know, you can, there are a lot of materials for the texts online to...
Content was made available for a limited number of districts and educators to take a look at for veracity and correctness. There were suggestions for change before this went public.
But we, we want it to be accurate, so if you can forward to Linda those information you've got, we will make sure it's, it's taken care of.
Can you send us out the link to the...
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking for that.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Michelle, and then I'm going to call on Eileen.
The, the, one of the, the concerns that I had heard is that there was not a, hopefully I'm getting, that, that the same people who put this together were, was pretty much the same people who vetted it before it went out. Like, it wasn't like a different group to sort of independently look at it with fresh eyes. It was sort of the same people looking at it again. And, and that was brought up as a, as a concern.
I'll double check for you. My understanding is that it wasn't fresh set of eyes. In fact, one of the people who was quoted, or has been alluded to in the article today, was asked to serve as an editorial role for the document, and following negotiations between all the parties declined for a variety of reasons.
All right, Eileen, please.
Boy, I am struggling with this, because I've been a huge proponent of online resources for teachers and open sourcing. And at the same time, I, I think because it's an outgrowth of what we're trying to do, I wish it hadn't been released before the social studies standards had been approved. Because now, I believe it's tarnishing what we're trying to do with the, with the standards themselves. I think it's a, and I'm, you know, listening to how many downloads there are, thinking how many of those are people curious because they wanted to see how interesting the, the books were. So I don't know what the solution is, but I think that to, in the future, for sure, if we're going to have a project like this, it can't be done in advance of the standards being approved. Because if there's errors in the standards that we're trying to correct, the process for vetting this document is going to take more time or money, more volunteer time, by people who aren't necessarily qualified to be writing textbooks, which is a different skill than even designing curriculum or being in the classroom. And I appreciate the passion that went into this, I just think we're going to have to be very thoughtful and careful about what we do in the future, and I don't know how to fix this.
Duly noted, thank you. Appreciate the comment.
I myself am with Eileen.
Uh-oh. It's the lean corner.
I'm really worried now.
No, we're not worried, we like it. All right, I do need to go back to Kyle on the Flint water. What, what do you know?
So quick, based on the conversation I reached out to my colleague at Public Health and Services, and they are working with the Health Department to put testing protocols in place for students and the lineup, community partners to do that work, and that they're hoping to start doing the testing for the next students.
Boy, look at the board passes a motion, and look what happens.
We are powered.
All good work by a lot of people is going on. All right, any tentative agenda for the next meeting? If there's anything board members would like to have on that, please let John, Cassandra, Michelle, Marilyn, or myself know, and we'll make sure those get put on. Future meeting dates, November 10, 9:30, December 8, 9:30, and Tuesday, January 12, 9:30. So all Tuesdays, November 10, December 8, January 12 are our next meetings. And with that, we are adjourned.